September 9th, 2013, 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, pledge allegiance to the flag, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemens.
Excused.
Counselor Landman.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Counselor Markucci.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Peliquin.
Present.
Counselor Vandal. Eight here, one excused.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is consider and accept a town council meeting minutes of Monday, August 19, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, raise a hand, it's fine. What's that? Thank you, everyone. Moving on to number four, subcommittee reports. General Government, Counselor Nicole.
Thank you. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held on Thursday, August 29 in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee members Counselor Vandal, Counselor Moriarty, and committee members Holly Cristo and Michael Janes. Also in attendance were Counselor Landman, Counselor Markucci, Counselor Carrasco, Counselor Clemens, Town Manager Clark, Fire Chief DeFranzo, Adrian Lammerow, Roger Cowett, Estelle Cowett, and Richard Nash. I called the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to sign the second partial proof of loss for the municipal airport and vote the additional money in the amount of $276,345.70 and submit to council for ratification. I read a memo from the town manager which basically says that there is an increase in the proof of loss amount. Mr. Clark said this additional money would be available for the Phase Two construction which has been put on hold by the council. I said a meeting will be called to discuss the future of the airport, but I'm waiting to receive more information prior to calling that meeting. A motion was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Ms. Cristo with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the manager's signing of the second partial proof of loss for the municipal airport and vote the additional money in the amount of $276,345.70. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. Agenda item number two, discuss protocol for capital requests via department heads. Mr. Clark said he has put together a standard operating procedure, Operation Procedure Number 10 regarding the purchases of equipment and vehicles over $25,000 based on the draft that Counselor Clemens had provided. It was decided that clarification would be made to this draft, quote, "license-plated", unquote, will be added before, quote, "equipment/vehicle", unquote. Exempt passenger vehicles will be deleted. The amount will be decreased to $10,000 and, quote, "anticipated intended disposition", end quote, will be added to the list of information required. That was just a discussion, there was no vote that was taken on that. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want me to read the procedure? I don't know that we have anything in the agenda that's going to actually give the procedure.
I think it would be nice if you could just give them a quick summary.
Okay.
I appreciate it, Counsel.
Not a problem.
That's Agenda item nine.
Yes, it's an agenda item, but it's not going to be reading the procedure.
Thank you, Counsel.
Standard Operating Procedure Number 10, implementation of town-wide policy for purchase of equipment, vehicles, over $10,000. In the development of capital budget requests, the town seeks to have available information to make informed decisions regarding the necessity to replace equipment and/or vehicles. The following policy information will be requested of each department for any equipment or vehicles in excess of $10,000. This is the proposal. All requests to replace through purchase of all license-plated equipment/vehicles over $10,000 would require an independent evaluation by a qualified dealer/ user of such equipment. The evaluation should provide information regarding safety and longevity of said equipment. Available tools to determine value should be utilized in the consideration of replacement. Value can be determined in part by professional journals such as the Kelley Blue Book to help determine the value of vehicle in question. No consideration will be given by the council to replace requests without the following information: the age and purchase date, mileage if applicable, operational hours, departmental use, repair history, alternatives, independent evaluation/appraisal, and the anticipated disposition of the replaced vehicle. A motion was made, a motion to adjourn was made by Holly Cristo and seconded by Michael Janes. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. Our meeting adjourned at 8:30, respectfully submitted. Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. I do have another meeting scheduled for Wednesday, September 18. That will be the meeting to discuss the manager's goals and objectives by the council, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Agenda B, DPW Subcommittee Reports. Counselor Vandal.
Chairman, meeting of DPW Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, September 4, 2013, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Subcommittee Members Counselor Carrasco, and Citizen Member Steve Lozzo. Also in attendance were Counselor Landman, Counselor Markucci, Town Manager Clark, DPW Director Heather Blakely, Helen Lenty, Roger Cowett, Estelle Cowett, Brian Lee, Rob Lemansky, Cheltenham Water and Sewer Commission. Counselor Peliquin was absent, and Mark Moran was excused. I called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to approve the town be included in a state bid contract for the purchase of white rock salt for the 2013-2014 winter season and to submit to council for ratification. Ms. Blakely said this is the same contract as last year. The price is below what other towns have in the area. The bid for the green sand is still out for bid. A motion was made by Steve Lozzo and seconded by Counselor Carrasco with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the town be included in a state bid contract for the purchase of white rock salt for the 2013-2014 winter season. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. Agenda item number two, vote to approve the acceptance of the DPW Equipment Maintenance Log Sheet to improve logging and repairs of the town vehicles serviced by DPW mechanics and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark said this is just informational and does not require a vote. Mrs. Blakely said this was more of a formalization of what is currently being done so that we can track information on cost, usage, maintenance, and so forth. Counselor Carrasco requested that the mechanic's name be included in the form. Agenda item number three, discuss Cheltenham Water intermunicipal agreement. Mr. Clark said he had a meeting with John LaFlesh and he told him that Southbridge will provide water to Bay Path, but the closest system goes to the Town Hall in Cheltenham, which is a mile down the road. He has asked Cheltenham's Water and Sewer to provide the piping but has not gotten any response. The town of Cheltenham is only using 20,000 gallons a day. We need a bigger commitment from Cheltenham so that we do not have stagnant water in the pipes. A consumption rate of 100,000 gallons a day is needed by Cheltenham in order to avoid blow-off to keep the water fresh. Counselor Carrasco asked if a letter could be drafted and signed by the council saying that we are in full support in getting water to Bay Path. Ron Lemansky from the Cheltenham Water and Sewer Commission gave an overview of what Cheltenham wants to do in installing piping. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Carrasco and seconded by Steve Lozzo. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Meeting adjourned at 8:20 PM, submitted respectfully. Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a meeting on Tuesday, August 13. Those minutes were read at our last council meeting at the library, in the Pioppi Room, and there's only a revision there on Agenda Item Number Three, and that is really to reflect accurate minutes. Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want me to read Agenda Item Number Three. I did correct it during the minute reading, so there's only a revision, but other than that, I have no minutes, and I do have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, September 11, 7:00, the Rice Conference Room, and there's only one Agenda Item, and that is to discuss and appoint our new Board of Health Director slash Building Inspector.
Thank you, Counsel. I don't think it would be necessary to read that.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Clemens is excused tonight, so Counselor Manna will read her meeting minutes, and I thank you.
Thank you. A meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, August 27, 2013, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Clemens, Counselor Peliquin, Counselor Manna, Citizen Members Roger Cowett and Evelyn Petrelli. Also in attendance were Counselor Nicola, Town Manager Clark, Estelle Cowett, and Cassandra Ackley. Chairwoman Clemens called the meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Agenda Item Number One, vote to enter into agreement with John Steppick, Southbridge Bicycles, 100 Central Street Rear, for awnings and sign at rear for total project cost of $9,291 and to submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Ackley showed a sketch of the awning. Counselor Clemens said Mr. Steppick is bringing in many biking projects to the community. Counselor Nicola asked if he might be interested in providing a bike safety program to present to schoolchildren. Mrs. Ackley said awnings projects are five years and facades are 10 years. A motion was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Mr. Cowett with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with John Steppick, Southbridge Bicycles, 100 Central Street Rear, for awnings and sign at rear for total project cost of $9,291. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Two, vote to enter into agreement with Jim Keyes, property owner Corner Pocket, 16 Central Street, for signs and doors on front and rear for the total project cost of $6,319 and to submit to council for ratification. Mrs. Ackley said this is a 10-year contract for signs and doors. A motion was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Counselor Peliquin with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with Jim Keyes, property owner of the Corner Pocket, 16 Central Street, for signs and doors on front and rear of the property for a total project cost of $6,319. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Three, vote to enter into agreement with Maria Colan, business owner Main Creations, 310 Main Street, for sign on front signboard for the total project cost of $2,299 and to submit to council for ratification. Counselor Nicola asked if the signs were going to be the same for all the properties. Mrs. Ackley said they will all be similar with slightly different lettering and coloring. A motion was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Counselor Peliquin with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with Maria Colan, business owner of Main Creations, 310 Main Street, for a sign on front signboard for the total project cost of $2,299. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Four, vote to enter into agreement with, I hope I'm pronouncing this name right, Mona Ahmed, a non-business owner, Sturbridge Insurance, 310 Main Street, for sign on front signboard for the total project cost of $1,292 and to submit to council for ratification. There was no discussion. A motion was made by Counselor Peliquin and seconded by Mr. Cowett with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with Mona Ahmed, a non-business owner of Sturbridge Insurance, 310 Main Street, for a sign on front signboard for a total project cost of $1,292. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Five, vote to enter into agreement with Kristy Griffith, business owner Little Suites, 310 Main Street, for sign on front signboard with the total project cost of $1,051. Mrs. Ackley said the business owner is new, and normally we don't do signs for new business, but in this case she has a nice little shop and the signage would go with the other businesses. A motion was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Counselor Peliquin with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with Kristy Griffith, business owner of Little Suites, 310 Main Street, for a sign on front sideboard for a total project cost of $1,051. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Six, vote to enter into agreement with RJF Realty Trust, property owner Village Photo, 345 Main Street, for a sign on Gaudist Street for the total project cost of $4,826. The sign on the Gaudist Street side will match the sign that is now on the front Main Street. A motion was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Counselor Peliquin with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with RJF Realty Trust, property owner of Village Photo, 345 Main Street, for a sign on Gaudist Street for a total project cost of $4,826. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Seven, vote to enter into agreement with Nick Sotar, property owner, 3337 Central Street, for replacement awning for the total project cost of $1,100. Mrs. Ackley said we did the original awning, but there was a tree there, and as it grew, it broke the awning. A motion was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Counselor Peliquin with a favorable recommendation to council to enter into agreement with Nick Sotar, property owner, at 3337 Central Street, for replacement awning for a total project cost of $1,100. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Other, another meeting is scheduled for September 17, 2013, at 6:30 PM. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Manna and seconded by Counselor Peliquin. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Chairwoman Clemens adjourned the meeting at 7:05 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk.
Thank you very much, Counsel. E, Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, September 3, 2013, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Carrasco, and Citizen Member Jack Jovan. Also in attendance were Counselor Landman, Counselor Markucci, Counselor Manna, Town Manager Clark, Fire Chief DeFranzo, Dolores Larishell, Derek Lamaca, Estelle Cowett, and Roger Cowett. Counselor Nicola was excused. Citizen Member Richard Nash was absent. Counselor, Chairman Moriarty called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda Item Number One, vote to adopt the Central Mass Regional Wide Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan and submit to council for ratification. Chief DeFranzo said Roland Larishell received an email from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission regarding an update on the Regionwide Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan, also known as PDMP. Southbridge had participated in the PDMP but missed the FEMA deadline to adopt it. There is now a very narrow window in which Southbridge can join the PDMP. If Southbridge does not have a PDMP in place, it may not be eligible for federal assistance should another disaster hit the town. Motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Carrasco with a favorable recommendation to council to adopt the Central Massachusetts Regionwide Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. Agenda Item Number Two, vote to transfer funds from the Town Council Reserve Fund to pay an invoice from a prior year for Harrington Hospital in the amount of $560.68 for services rendered June 18, 2011, as approved by the Southbridge Indemnification Board of Directors, and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark said the claim was approved by the board on August 24, 2011, but due to the refusal of one of the doctors to send needed documentation, the insurance company denied the claim. He is asking for approval to pay for this invoice. A motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Carrasco with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the transfer of funds from the Town Council Reserve Fund to pay Harrington Hospital's invoice in the amount of $560.68 for services rendered on June 18, 2011. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. Agenda Item Number Three, discuss the marking of the fire chief's new vehicle. Counselor Landman said he brought this up because of past practice. He feels that since this is a town vehicle, it should be marked. Mr. Clark stated that he suggested to the fire chief that he put a blue plate on the vehicle, therefore identifying it as a municipal vehicle. He had previously done this with his own vehicle. He feels this is adequate in identifying the vehicle. Counselor Markucci said the decal on the vehicle is readily recognizable by the citizens, and she has received calls about the car being marked. Counselor Landman stated that the DPW director's new car will be marked and feels all town cars should be marked. Mr. Clark stated he will have the car marked. Agenda Item Number Four, discuss out-of-town ambulance transfers. Counselor Landman said he brought this up because he would like to know the numbers on the amount of ambulance calls we are doing and how many are going elsewhere. Mr. Clark said our, Mr. Clark said our numbers are down from last year and we really don't know why. He doesn't believe anyone has a definitive answer as to why our numbers are down. Mr. Clark said they are in discussions to find a program that would work to cover additional runs for the ambulances. A motion to adjourn was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Carrasco. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Meeting adjourned at 8:25 PM, respectfully submitted by Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk, and the Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee will next have a meeting on Tuesday, September 17, at 7:30 PM, in the Rice Conference Room. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I just have a couple this evening. Just a reminder to residents, household hazards waste day scheduled Saturday, September 28, 2013, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for Southbridge residents only. No preregistration is required, however, proof of residency is necessary. New to the event is shredding of documents by a third party will be included at this event. And also, a quick reminder that LEAF Yard Waste Drop-Off located at DPW 185 Gulfwood Road continues to be open. Please, again, to the public, no plastic bags. Any concerns or questions, please contact the Health Department at 508-764-4252 for any additional information, or visit ThinkReduce.com. Last, I would like to give a big shout-out to the Southbridge Police Department for the car show that they had up on the hill by the airport. It was very well-run, very well-attended. For putting together something on such short notice, it's something that they can build on next year. Been a lot of positive feedback from our community and also some other communities, so that's definitely a positive thing, and I did see many counselors, and many counselors literally took the plunge. So, thank you, and Counselor Manna for running the booth and selling raffle tickets. It was just overall, the weather was on their side, and a very well-attended event, and a lot of happy people, so kudos to all involved. And that's all I have for announcements right now. Moving on to number six, Town Managers' Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have several this evening, and a couple of them are long, but just the first one we did receive, actually I believe it was today that it came in, even this afternoon, National Grid has announced that there will be a power outage tonight at 9:00 PM to approximately 10:00 PM. There was a necessary repair to one of the feeder lines, that they found a problem on Eastford Road. The power will be out for approximately one hour from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM on the following streets. And only because this is coming up, I just want to make sure that people are aware. Ash, Beecher, Boland, Brook, Bruce Lane, Karen, Kathy Lane, Cedar, Central, Chapin, Cohasi, Coal Ave, Columbus Ave, Country Club Place, Crane, Crescent, Cross, Curtis, Dresser, Dupaul, Durfee, Elm, and I'll talk about that in a minute, Everett, Field, Forest Ave, Franklin, Gardner, Glover, Goddard, Hamilton, Harding, Harding Court, High, Highview, High, High Street, Jacobs, Janet, Judith, Lapier, Laurel Hill, Lebanon, Lincoln, Lynn, Main, Maple, Marcy, Marsh, Mary Ellen, Meadowbrook, Oak, Oaks Ave, Oak Ridge, Oliver, Orchard, Park, Pine, Pinedale, Poplar, Prospect River, Sales School, Servant, South Spring, Strand, Summer, Taft, Teresa Ave, Union, Walker, Water, Winter, Woodcraft, Woodcliff, Woody Lynn, and Woody Crest. I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that this building does not have a secondary power source, so the building literally will go dark at 9:00 if they shut it off. So, I would request, this has got to be the first time in 23 years that I've got a chance to do this, that we actually end the meeting at a specific time if we're not done with business at 8:45 to give people an opportunity to exit the building safely, because the only thing that will be on will be the exit lights, and we will obviously lose elevator and other things in the building. So, if we can get as much done as we can, I just wish to make that as a request to council.
Thank you.
In terms of some of the other ones, obviously less urgent, but still things that should be announced, Southbridge Water Department will start its annual valve exercising program on Monday, September 16, 2013, at approximately 7:00 AM, and continuing approximately six to eight weeks. Exercising will commence, will start on Dennison Cross Road and continue easterly through the town. Due to the exercising, there'll be some pressure loss, discoloration of water. Customers are advised to check their water before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediments in their house laterals. This will clear after a brief run of the tap. Also, on a similar note, we will commence our semi-annual hydrant flushing program on Monday, September 16, at 7:00 AM, and continue daily for approximately six to eight weeks. Between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM, flushing will start in the Westville area and continue easterly throughout the town. The procedure will include cleaning the reservoir intake screens, flushing accumulated sediments from the water main, and testing the operation of each hydrant. The department requests that during this period, again, you watch for washing, before washing clothes, and just run the tap. From the Health Department, a flu clinic will be held on Thursday, October 24, 2013, from 10:30 AM to noon at the Southbridge Community Center located at 153 Chestnut Street. This event will be open to all Southbridge residents from two years old and up. Flu masks will be available for eligible children and adults, 2 to 49. I don't know why they have 2 to 49, but RNs will screen them, and then adults ages 15 up will receive the flu shot. Please bring all medical insurance cards, include Medicare, including Medicare, all are welcome, with or without insurance. And if there's additional questions, please contact the Health Department at 508-764-4252. The library is going to be having a author from a book called Once Upon a Flock book signing on Thursday, September 19, at 6:30. So, if you are a fan of Lauren Schuler, I think that's the way you pronounce it, the author of Once Upon a Flock, she will be there signing books. Also, on Save the Date, we've received a material for network for nonprofits, Thursday, September 19, from 3:00 to 5:00, at the Jacob Andrews Library, Pioppi Room, 236 Main Street in Southbridge. If you want to maintain relationships with colleagues, meet like-minded professionals, referral opportunities, create ambassadors for your organization, form partnerships, or learn about new trends, increase your organization's visibility with new ideas. This is sponsored by the Southbridge Commission on Disabilities. And then lastly, and certainly this is a fairly serious matter as well, at our landfill, we excavate out, or our operator, Casella, excavates out, I call it virgin soil, soil that's onsite, originally onsite. that's onsite, originally onsite. They took it out, they mounted it up to use as the landfill receives material. That actually received a heavy amount of water, we believe. We believe at this point, one of the primary factors was the saturation of the water. The bottom line is about 20,000 cubic yards of material, which is approximately 350 feet long by 50 feet wide by 30 feet deep, slid off of the hill. This is in a fairly isolated area of the landfill, but it did impact bordering wetlands in the neighboring town. The Charlton Conservation Commission has been contacted, and they have been out. Casella has hired the firm Sandborne Head to assess the issue. They have submitted a permit to DEP for the proposed cleanup. DEP is currently reviewing that plan. The town has utilized, which we, I think, approved at our last meeting, the tie-in-bond contract to have tie-in-bond come out and monitor the cleanup efforts, and to make sure that it's being done in a proper fashion. I would anticipate, this did happen back in 2004, before the current operator, and there was a fine that was levied, that fine was paid by the operator. I do believe that there's a strong potential that a fine may be issued on this as well. It is a fairly serious event, and we are in the process of trying to get to the bottom of what happened, so we can make sure that it does not happen again. And that concludes my remarks this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, this is town manager. Moving on to agenda item number seven, swearing in and presentations tonight. We have one presentation, The Canary and Dark Horse Tavern by Micah Ellis and Richard Wallaston. Good evening.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Dick Wallaston. I operate the Dark Horse Tavern at 12 Crane Street. First, I'd like to thank the town council for allowing me the opportunity to introduce my business to you. Tonight, I will shed some light on three well-kept secrets of Southbridge. I'd like to start by asking the board a question. Where is the nearest craft brewery company? And not to put anybody on the spot, the answer is Bentley Brewing Company, located in the rear of 12 Crane Street. It is a 10-barrel system capable of producing 300 gallons of beer. The distribution of the beer will commence with the issuing of the farmer's brewer's license in mid-September. Now, this is very important. The logo on the bottle and the signage on our building say proudly produced in Southbridge. Our team thinks it's important to have a strong sense of community and visually display on our products and buildings. The craft beer will be available at the second well-kept secret at Southbridge, the Dark Horse Tavern, located again in the rear of 12 Crane Street. On entering, you will experience a sense of being transported back to an Irish pub. We're attempting to create a cheers-like atmosphere where mature individuals can share their thoughts while enjoying a craft beer or other beverage. We offer excellent pub food, 12 craft beers, five domestic beers, and a fine selection of liquor. It is a tavern. We are proud to bring your wife, business associates, or friends for a wonderful evening. On Wednesday night, we have karaoke, where you can demonstrate your singing skills. On Friday and Saturday, we feature local acoustical groups who play music of the '70s and '80s. Metallic bands need not apply. We have outside seating, where you can enjoy your favorite appetizer and beverage while the Quinneborg River meanders by. The third well-kept secret is the music hall, also located in the rear of 12 Crane Street. Micah Ellis, who's with me tonight, does an outstanding job in attracting named bands to the facility. She works diligently in creating a theme that complements the band. If anybody's been down there, the laser light show is worth it, just to see how she set up all the lights. This year, we had over 200 bands apply for 28 slots. Micah filtered out the bands that did not target, and our age group that we try to target is 30 years and over. I'd like to thank you for your attention. We're asking for your support. And from our business, we hope to enhance the pride in Southbridge, so that other businesses join the Southbridge community to truly make Southbridge their home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Micah?
Good evening. My name is Micah Ellis, and I operate the Canary Music Hall. I just wanted to briefly let you know what it was all about, because I'm very excited about it, and I think you and the rest of the community should share in my excitement. We are a true music hall. We're not a bar at all. We are an acoustically sound venue. We seat 267 people at full capacity. We offer house sound and a full light show with projections, so the visuals and the acoustics together combine for an amazing production. We are very diverse in the music that we book. We go blues, we go reggae, we go rock, southern rock, we do folk, anything that targets our demographic, which, like Dick said, is 30-plus. Unfortunately, I do do metal. We do bring in some metal bands, but they're always responsible and older. We don't hire bar bands. We are targeting mature, seasoned musicians. We're getting the best regional acts now, and we're also starting to get some national acts, which tickles us. We're open on Friday nights and Saturday nights only. Just like Dick said, our target demographic is 30 and up. We want mature, responsible guests who can feel comfortable in a clean, trouble-free environment. We're very proud to announce that we have not had any police calls at all in the first year that we were open, and when you have 200 people in a room, that's amazing in itself. We're also affiliated with a nonprofit called Strangers Helping Strangers. They come in and visit our venue during certain shows. This company, or entity, whatever you want to call it, collects money and non-perishable food products from our guests, and then it is donated to a food pantry in our community. So, we have donated $100 in cash and about 300 pounds of food to Food Share, Inc., and we will continue doing that service over the next year. We create photo albums and videos for every single one of the events that we host. So, we invite you to check out our Facebook page, which is where most of our stuff is promoted, and you can look at what we have, look at the videos, see what we have. And then I'd also like to take the time to invite you to come check it out, come see and feel. Even if live music isn't for you, just to know what you have in the community, to tell your citizens about it. You're the leaders. We need your support in order to continue. So, I do thank you very much for your time, and I hope to see you down there as my guest when you have a free opportunity. I did leave the schedule there for you, so if there's any particular show that hits your fancy, just come on down and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a little side note, I have been at that establishment a couple times. It's the Dark Horse Tavern, for me, you're absolutely right, it's a little hidden jewel, and it's, to me, where I am in my life, I like that peaceful, quiet environment, that you can actually have a conversation, hold a conversation with someone instead of yelling and stuff. So, my experience has been nothing but great, and I hope you are here for many, many years in our community, and I hope other people get out and go check out the facility, because there was one night that you guys had tiki torches outside on the patio, and you were playing saxophone and stuff. So, it's just, it's a different environment, but it's a nice environment. So, kudos to you, and I hope you have much success in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, B has been canceled for tonight on that one. So, going on to agenda item number eight, we are going to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to speak that's something that's not on the agenda
Good evening, Councilor. This is Roger Cowan, 82, Telly Avenue. I wish to report that petition drive was a success. We collected 10,075 signatures, and we're in Boston right now. I also wish to thank the support of my wife, all of councilors who volunteered to help make this possible, as well as all the businesses in Southbridge, all the citizens that took part in this, in allowing me to collect signatures in front of the businesses and everything. And I thank everybody, and thanks again.
I want to thank you, Mr. Cowan, for all your hard work and many, many hours. You are definitely a go-getter when you have your mindset on something, so I thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight on something that is not on the
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Health. Southbridge has a lot of natural resources and open space to protect. Protecting land around resources such as wetlands, woods, fields, open water adds to the protection of our water supply and to the general ecology of the area, which means clean air, water, and soil for us all. Protecting land fits in with the recently completed Southbridge Master Plan, meeting several goals in the Sustainability Section, which is 5.0, and possibly other sections, but I didn't look at them all. 5.3.1, protected land can assure that source water areas are protected from current and potential contamination. 5.5.1 encourages us to protect natural resources. And 5.2.2 encourages us to protect open space. 5.1.1 and 0.2 of the Master Plan suggest increasing awareness of the need to plan for our future by holding environmental awareness events. In meeting that goal, we have two events scheduled in October in partnership with the MassCon Sustainable Forest Partnership. So, if you own 10 or more acres of land and would like to ask questions about improving your land and how best to protect it, come to a talk on October 3rd at the Jacob Edwards Library from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and a walk on October 19th at our own urban forest, Coal Forest, which is next to the community center, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Both events will have people who know about Chapter 61 law and conservation restrictions and the history and wildlife of the area. There is no charge for either event, and refreshments will be served, and this will be translated into Spanish next council meeting. Thanks.
I thank you very much for your time in getting that information out. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, start moving on. Agenda item number nine, vote to approve by concept the town manager's stand-in operating procedure number 10 for the implementation of a town-wide policy for purchase of equipment, vehicles over $10,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this? Councilor Manor?
I just have one really quick question. Is there going to be a standard template for all the departments to use? Will there be a standard template for all the departments to use, so it's not one department has this template, another, a different type of template?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a capital budget form, which we will put into place, make these adjustments to put this in, so we will have one form. The school department does do a little different. We will send them their forms, but they have a little different process than we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Landevan?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Number 10, vote to adopt the essential Mass Regionwide Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Landevan?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Eleven, vote to appropriate $560.68 from Town Council Reserve for unpaid prior-year bill to be reimbursed to Harrington Hospital, as approved by the Southbridge Identification Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilor Nicola?
Thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but, you know, and what I read in my packet about this, and what was discussed during the reading of the minutes, am I led to believe that we actually had a doctor who refused to provide the documentation to the insurance company showing that this was an on-duty accident or related to an on-duty injury, and that's why we're paying this $560 bill?
Well, just to be clear, actually, the claim was approved, there was a bill that the insurance company asked for additional backup, and we could not get the additional backup. So, it's a valid claim. The only thing here is that we could not get the additional backup. It was actually, I believe it was a dermatologist, a specialist, that did not want to provide the information, which held up paying the claim.
Okay. So, he just refused, or she refused to provide this information? Okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Landevan?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 12, vote to ratify the second partial proof of loss of the municipal airport for additional funds in the amount of $276,345.76. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Landevan?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Thirteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and John Stepek, Southbridge Bicycle, 100th Central Street rear, for awnings and sign at the rear under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for a total project cost of $9,291. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Landevan?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Fourteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Jim Key's property owner of Corner Park at 16 Central Street for signs and doors on front and rear under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for the total project cost of $6,319. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilor Manor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to either town manager or Mrs. Ackley. Could we just clarify the time on the contract during the planning and development? The contract says 10 years, and our packet says 5 years. So, I just would like clarification on that.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Ackley, just to confirm before the meeting. As she did go through, and on this one, it was five years, and the schedule was also five years, and I believe we have that accurate in the materials that were distributed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Landevan?
Yes.
Councilor Manor?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Fifteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Marie Cologne, business owner of Main Creation, 310 Main Street for sign on front signboard under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for a total project cost of $2,299, and to submit to council for ratification. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none.
If they move to a place that the town does not approve of, they have to pay it back. But there is a forgiveness policy if somebody goes out of business, and that's the reason why we very rarely go with a new business, because they don't always make it. In this case, it's a very small amount because it's a very inexpensive sign, and I don't believe that they're going to get any business if they don't have a nice sign because everybody else is going to have one there. So we kind of weighed that opportunity and still decided to go forward if you will approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Ackley, just again, point of reference, and this is just my own thought on this, but personally, again, I want to support any business or any new business, old business, whatever, but I'm just concerned a little that we're opening up Pandora or Box because it's a new business, so we're setting precedent, saying it's okay, we're here to help you, so I'm just worried about future down the road of being consistent.
I thought about that too, but we do have a waiting list, and the ones that are on the waiting list are all established business and business owners. We have a, we actually have five people waiting for us to do projects.
Okay.
So I totally see your point.
Mr. Town Manager?
I do think in this circumstance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, that the fronts were all renovated on this building, so it would look a little funny to have this one not have a new sign and the other two locations. We've already paid some money to have that front of that building be improved.
Yes.
I have that right, so, I mean, it would look a little funny to do a new front and have two new signs and then not the third, so, but your point's very well taken that we don't want to start a precedence, but I think maybe we can say...
She has a sign, it's just not a very nice one. We were a little concerned about how it would look when everybody else has a nice sign and she doesn't. Your point is well taken, we need to really think about that. We try to do what we can do to help new businesses, but sometimes they move in and we didn't even know they were there because we can, can you hear me okay? We have the capacity to get them business counseling for free, for absolute free, from a marvelous man who's got a tremendous amount of experience. And sometimes new businesses move in and we didn't even know they were there until we see them one day. So it's kind of an issue we have to deal with.
I thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Pellicwen?
I would just like to say although I do respect the concerns expressed by Councilor Crossco and yourself, I think given the amount of investments we've already made specifically in that building, rebuilding the entire facade and putting new signage across the whole building, I think particularly given that piece of real estate on Main Street, it would make lots of sense to make this investment, and I'd just like to say that I completely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Nicola?
Thank you. I agree with Councilor Pellicwen. While we don't want to set a precedent because of all the reasons that you've stated, it would look kind of funny to have this, you know, a lot of brand-new work done on this facade and not to take advantage of the grants and have all of the signs, you know, I mean, not only for the businesses but for the aesthetics for ourselves as well, what it looks like on Main Street. So I will support this as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item 19, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Nick Sodar, property owner of 3337 Central Street for replacement awning under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for a total project cost of $1,100. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty? Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. 18, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and RJF Realtor Trust, property owner of Village Photo, 345 Main Street for a sign on Garter Street under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for a total project cost of $4,826. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. 18, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and RJF Realtor Trust, property owner of Village Photo, 345 Main Street for a sign on Garter Street under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for a total project cost of $4,826. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item 19, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Nick Sodar, property owner of 3337 Central Street for replacement awning under the CDBG Vacate Improvement Project for a total project cost of $1,100. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 20, vote to approve that the town be included in the state bid contract for the purchase of white rock salt for the 2013-2014 winter season at the state contract price of $49.93 a ton or $99,860 for an estimate 2,000 tons of rock salt. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, councils? Councilor Nicola?
Thank you. I was not able to attend this DPW meeting, so forgive me if this has been discussed already. Is this the stuff that we've been, this isn't the good stuff, is it?
No.
What happened with the good stuff?
Well, we have the good stuff, to use your terminology, in another contract. This is when we need to mix sand and salt together. We have the ability to put this down in certain areas, but I'll allow the DPW director...
We will still be using Clearlane. Clearlane gets bid out through a different consortium and it's actually out to bid right now, so we're waiting for those prices to come back. But we have been using a combination of both the Clearlane and the rock salt depending on the temperatures that are out there. Ronnie knows when to use which one and he's very, this is how we keep the cost down because the Clearlane is much more expensive, although it does a better job in certain situations, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bailey. Thank you.
Anyone else? The good stuff will be coming.
Thanks. Love that good stuff.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Pellicwen?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 21, vote to ratify the contract with MHQ to purchase of a 2013 Ford Explorer, excuse me, Explorer 4x4 per the Plymouth County Commissioners Procurement Contract number PCC-121314 for the DPW director in the amount of $27,170 with the provision that the existing vehicle is traded in, funding to be $10,000 from the water capital, $10,000 from the sewer capital, and $7,170 from the FY 2014 Capital Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Crossco?
Yes, I believe it was Councilor Nicola that brought it up during the subcommittee meeting, and I just wanted to, through you, Mr. Chair, our town manager, I know it was discussed that Ms. Bailey right now is currently driving a vehicle that she almost had an accident with. Is that also going to be included in this? I believe it was a suggestion in regards to making sure we get rid of the vehicles that don't...
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
I do appreciate the question, and the other night I didn't fully, I guess, articulate the comment that I wanted to make. We do have one vehicle that has not passed inspection, would be thousands and thousands of dollars to get it to pass inspection. That is the one that we are contemplating trading in, so the DPW director will have a new vehicle that she will drive around in. The current vehicle that she is using, is she is just using it, was the former vehicle of the Chief of Engineering Services. It is a piece of equipment that has seen better days, will probably pass inspection, but it's not something that we would want to put heavy road miles on. We do have, or will have, a vacancy in that Chief of Engineering Services, and we will need a vehicle for that person to go around. At this point, administration is contemplating doing a kind of a better assessment of that vehicle to make sure that it is safe, and then to also kind of look at the vehicle acquisitions that we have approved in the capital budget to see if there's something we want to move around, and we will come back with a plan for what we want to do with that vehicle. But at this point, it's one for one, and when we hire a Chief of Engineering Services, we want to make sure we give them a safe vehicle. And we will come back with a plan for what we want to do with that vehicle. But at this point, it's one-for-one, and when we hire a Chief of Engineering Services, we want to make sure we give them a safe vehicle. So at this point, it's one-for-one, and we will get back with what we're going to do with that other vehicle.
Certainly.
Mr. Clark, now, the vehicle that she currently drives, that vehicle, say somebody else is going to get into it from the department and use it, is it safe currently?
Does it have a valid inspection sticker on it?
It has a valid, it does have a valid inspection sticker. I, it is safe for driving around local in the town. I wouldn't feel comfortable sending it out of town too, too far away. It's just, it is a 1996 Ford Ranger with close to 100,000 miles on it. That frame has already been repaired and has already shown wear and tear damage on it. If you ride in it, you would feel that it is quite rough to ride in, and so, you know, it's a vehicle that you can ride around town in and not feel like you're putting your life in danger, but I wouldn't go 50 miles an hour in it.
Yes, it's just my, my concern is, our employees, our, our staff, if it's not, I,
I believe it was Ms. Bailey that said that she lost brakes, and I know that's gotten fixed. But again, my concern is, I don't want to put anybody else at risk. So if the vehicle needs to go, it needs to go. So I, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing it leave with it, with, with this purchase.
I don't know that they'd take two vehicles and trade. That could be part of the issue there. I'd have to explore that. And I, I don't think we have, I don't think this need, this vehicle has as high a need as some of our other vehicles we have down there that also haven't passed inspection, so we have to look at our whole fleet and make an evaluation of our whole fleet. I will have the mechanics do a thorough evaluation of this vehicle, and if, maybe even have it sent out to a dealership to see if, what they, their opinions of it are, an independent evaluation. But, you know, there might be some things we can fix on it to make it just that much safer, that we would feel more comfortable on it. But for right now, it's not a high, high-use vehicle. You know, I particularly choose not to take it out of town when I have to go out of town. But that is my, you know.
Thank you. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, too, may I can answer this? It says in here about the vehicle being traded in, do you anticipate the dollar value going down after the vehicle's traded in?
The, the value they've given me right now is just $100, because it's not a valid.
Oh, that's right.
It's in that bad a shape.
Tell him you got new brakes.
No, not that vehicle, that's the other vehicle.
Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Ms. Bailey, and I mean this respectfully, but we have three mechanics, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How do our vehicles get to a point, if we have three, excuse me, three active mechanics, how do we get to that point that our vehicles do not pass inspection or you're driving a vehicle where you lost brakes literally and almost ended in someone's garage?
Well, a lot of our vehicles are not passing inspections because of the level of rust damage that are on them. That's the case in the vehicle, the, the old Ford Explorer basically was rusting out. It gets to the point where those repairs get very expensive, so we choose, you can't always repair those, you know, be able to repair those repairs to get them to pass. The brakes, it's just an age thing. Until they go, you really don't know that they're going to go. You can inspect things, but you might not see that wear spot on that and where it's wearing. And that's just what happened. It was wearing funny, and it was over the years, and it was rubbing on something, and the hose just went. You know, that's what happens when we start driving 15-year-old vehicles.
So it kind of, really kind of, the mechanics are piecemealing, if you will, the vehicles.
Right.
Now, that vehicle that you're talking about, I noticed you're saying to stay in town and not go over 50 miles an hour, and I can see you're saying that with hesitate in your voice.
I can tell you right now-
That's concerning to me as a counselor.
That vehicle's odometer and speedometer don't work. And they haven't since I've been here.
We got to get rid of it.
Is it repairable? Yes. Is it something that we have chose to bump something else to repair? No. We operate it as safely as we can, and we know that we will look for it to be repaired. It is one of those things that is on the list, but along with another 20 vehicles that are on the list happening here.
But you feel comfortable enough to stand here and say you wouldn't have a problem if anyone had to use that?
Locally?
In town, locally?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Now that the brakes are fixed, yeah.
Okay.
I, I drive it every day. Honestly, I'm out in it every day around town. People see me in it every day. I wouldn't want to take it on the highway. I just wouldn't feel-
Safe. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Town Manager?
I just wanted to comment that I think what we had in the community, you know, I don't want to just say prior to my arrival, but there was a, a tradition of trying to make sure we just repaired things instead of replacing things. And I think really the, the better cultural approach to take to that is to try to replace a little bit each year. Do what you can each year to try to have the fleet last longer. And when you go through a, a five- or 10-year stint and you don't replace vehicles, I mean, yeah, we have mechanics that can, can keep them together, but at some point, you just can't continue to repair. So I know administration has been bringing more vehicles because we've reached that point where things are just not worth continuing to repair. So we are trying to get into that culture. To the point, I'm not going to put somebody in a vehicle that I think is fundamentally unsafe, but we do have in the capital budget that was approved, 100, I think it was about $150,000. We're contemplating buying additional bigger trucks, and I think one of the things that we'll look at is, are there ways that we can kind of right-size the fleet? Are there ways we can then, you know, put trucks in that make a little bit more sense, maybe more fuel-efficient, maybe, you know, right for the task that we're looking for? And I think what we're really asking for tonight is, just give us a little bit of time to come back with a plan. But we do definitely want to make, I don't want to say modernize the fleet, because that's way too kind of a word, but we do want to try to get the fleet back into a, a better situation, and we do need to, to purchase these, and we know that we've been having to do that. So we will be back, and we will be getting vehicles that are unsafe, but I hate to say that it may be one that's more unsafe, that we would rather get out of the fleet first before this one. But we will be back.
Counselor Moriarty.
I just want to note, the same thing I said at the, the, the last regular council meeting, while I agree that, that full-heartedly I agree that this vehicle needs to be replaced, I, I still do not agree with the current funding mechanism, splits in particular. And for that reason, as current constitution, I won't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to say again, first of all, I want to thank you, Heather, for, you know, we've been going back and forth a lot on things, and I think we're in a much better place as a council now, going to get the information. I think we sent out the message of saying what we want, what we expect for any kind of vehicle. And obviously, you know, prior to this, we did vote on having a little structure and, you know, with the, the mechanics doing their end. The only other piece I want to add to this, and I don't even know if this is currently happening now, I do remember when we did move over to your new site, there's a wash bay there.
That's correct.
Do we have a standard policy on taking care of our equipment as they come in now? They might have to end their day a little earlier out on the street, but coming in and washing the vehicle and-
Right. All of our vehicles that- General maintenance. Now that are subjected, especially during the salt and sand season, are regularly washed, and they are greased at the end of the season, and they're undercoated at the end of the season, so there is a policy to keep them in much better shape than, so that, to prevent them from rusting out, as we have seen before. But our vehicles do take even more abuse as far as salting and sanding and everything, because they're running over those roads right fresh. So, and they do take the time to get them rinsed off on a regular basis after they come in, and to grease all the undercarriages and undercoat them every year, so.
And I do thank you. And did you say there was a standard policy in place now?
It's, it's their standard procedures. It's not a written policy, but they, they know that that's part of their procedures, that, that, they might not do it the same night of the storm, but it's done as soon as they're back in and into, they're back into the regular process.
Okay. I thank you. Any other questions? Seeing on roll call, please.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Crossco?
No.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
No.
Six yes, two no?
Thank you. Passes. Number 22, Council's Forum. Tonight I will start with Counselor Vandal.
I'm all set this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick thank you to Nick Tortis and Eric Jacobson for quickly responding to an email that I sent them in regards to the community cleanup I did a couple of weeks ago on Main Street, on one of the alleyways by the old pump house, and the restaurant there was a disaster. I took some pictures, sent them off to Mr. Tortis and Mr. Jacobson, and within a couple of days, the alleyway was cleaned up by the potential, the potential business owner of the pump house. He had his crew do it. So it was at no cost to the town, and it looks fabulous. And also, Mr. Jacobson did send out some notices to some other areas along Main Street to get their properties cleaned up. And I'd just like to mention that when you live on Main Street and you have the alleyway there and you're on the second or third floor, the alleyway is not your trash. I picked up so much trash. It was unbelievable. It's just, it's not your, it's not your trash bin. Just show respect, people do have to walk down those alleyways. We have some very nice lights that go down there. It's, it's very beautiful walking down there to get into the back parking lot, but it's not beautiful when it's filled with trash. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I just have one thing. I want to commend the Southbridge Fire Department with their work with the most recent fires, but especially the one that on Worcester Street, Juliana's Pizzeria. The initial were only four responders. They got to the scene quick, and, and they saved the whole apartment dwelling. I, I just want to commend them for their work. Thank you for your service to our town and our community. And again, I want to also thank the public that picked up the phone and dialed right away. They didn't wait, they didn't waste any time. They, it helped everybody. It was a well job. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Moriarty.
Just similar, similar to what you had pointed out earlier, as far as the, the runway, the car show up at the, the airport, put on by the Cops and Kids program. I was very pleased to see that it was well-attended, a good turnout, and, and like you, I, I've heard a lot of very, very good things. So I just wanted to kind of give kudos to everybody involved with that. And that's it for now.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Nicole.
Thank you. Does anybody offhand know how much the cops and kids made from that? Do you know yet, Counselor?
I don't believe there's a total number yet. I, I don't know. Maybe somebody should get in contact with Sergeant Dinghy, he might know.
I'll look into it. I just didn't know if, because you were working that booth, if you had any idea how much, how much they brought in.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the total dollar amount as of this time.
Well, it was very impressive. You know, we live in a community where that, that venue is, is very popular and very interesting. I enjoyed it tremendously. I love looking at, at vintage cars and, and seeing what people do with, with cars. It was really great. And, you know, it was just a great atmosphere. There was a lot of people, a lot going on, happy faces. It's really nice to see. I too want to commend the police department, as usual. Did a, a very nice professional job, and all the people that worked it. I also want to commend the fire department, because while that was going on up at the airport, we had firefighters on Main Street that were collecting for the muscular dystrophy association. And that always puts a smile on my face, because it brings back the old days. That's been going on ever since I was a kid, and it was great, great to see, and thank you for that. The one thing that I wished I hadn't seen was after I left Main Street and I was heading down towards the Rotary, was a gentleman pushing a, a stroller with a little kid in it, and just proceeded to take the sandwich that he was eating and the, the wrappings, and just as if it was nothing at all, just threw it right there on the sidewalk and continued to walk, which totally amazes me that in the year 2013, people still don't know how to treat property, or just how to act, how to be, just how to act like a human being, just to throw stuff. Love to see what your house looks like, buddy. Must be beautiful in your place. But it was a nice weekend for all the other things that were going on in town, and it really made me feel good just to see people out and enjoying themselves and spending time together. I don't have anything else. I just wanted to make those few comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Pellequin.
Thank you. I was at the event on Saturday as well, and I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved in organizing it. The cars were very impressive, and I'm really not even a car person to begin with, but it's kind of amazing to see all the different things people do to customize them. And yes, all the vendors who came out, there were a ton of vendors, and lots of really good opportunities to support our town, and the really great summer rec program that the police department runs. So thank you, everybody. The other thing is, I saw in the beacon that the legislative breakfast meetings are coming up, and I would like to go to the September 20th meeting in Brimfield. I believe it's in the municipal building in Brimfield. So if anybody else wants to go, maybe we can go together. And the Worcester County Selectment Association meeting is on September 19th, and I believe that's in Littleton, if anybody would like to go to that as well. I don't know if we've officially joined them or not, but I don't-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we've officially joined or not. That's September 20th, though. I am scheduled to go to that, so if you want to ride together-
Are you? Okay.
On Brimfield, that'd be fine.
But yeah, the, the Worcester County Selectment Association is, is this a group of the MMA that's specifically for municipal officials from Worcester County, so that we can better advocate for regional issues when we ask the State House for what we need? So, seems pretty interesting. And, oh, as, as many of you know, I also collect books every fall to give out for my trick-or-treaters, and it's getting to be about that time. So if you happen to have children's books or, or books for teenagers at home, or if you know of some people who've grown out of their books, please let me know, because I would love to give them out to the kids who come trick-or-treating at my house this year. And if you want to call me, my number is 413-695-5289. Again, that's 413-695-5289. Or you can send me an email at apellequin@southridgemass.org, and I will come and take your books. Or if you have lots of books and you want to drop them off, that's fine, too. We'll work something out. So, thanks so much. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Markucci.
I'm all set this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Number 23, discussion in the next meeting. Counselor Markucci.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Monday, September 23rd, 7 o'clock, right here in the council chambers.
Thank you, Counsel. Gender item number 24, do I have a motion for adjournment? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Show hands. Thank you, this meeting's adjourned. Everyone have a nice night.